Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. My name is Lisa Evans. I am a lifelong resident of this amazing community. I want to be clear, this panel, this panel is not sponsored or backed by any organization. It was literally a trip to Gianni La where I agreed to do this. We all know what those aisles are like. It's an old home we've been there. This panel was put together on an idea last week to fill a gap due to the last Meet the Candidate Night typically hosted in our community. I want to thank the warehouse on the canal owners, Mike and Christie, for offering up this beautiful venue for tonight. You guys have done an amazing job. For those of you that haven't been to the warehouse on the canal, please stop in. This place is beautiful. I want to thank Cliff Ranks for offering to record this and play it live for our community members. All incumbents and new candidates were invited to attend. All of us have busy schedules and sometimes prior commitments cannot be moved. Do not make any judgments on the candidate that has a schedule conflict tonight. Mrs. Gerhardt responded to all the questions. We will be posting those along with this video, so all candidates have participated this evening. This is a panel discussion. It will be moderated by me. This is not an open mic. Residents were invited to submit questions and their questions have been included in those I will be asking the candidates tonight. The Meet the Candidate questions are designed to solicit their vision, their views, and ideas about our future. This forum is not about where we have been. It's about where we are going. We are focused forward on tonight's panel. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the questions. My timekeeper Lori Zito here is in charge of holding up the signs. The candidates will be watching for those. We'll give them a one-minute warning, a 30-second warning, and then I'm gonna kinda look at them and we're gonna move on. A quote I want us all to embrace tonight as we embrace the next hour together. One of the most sincere forms of respect is actually listening to what another has to say, and I hope we are all here in the spirit to do that this evening. So tonight, let's role model for our community what mutual respect looks like. Let's listen more, which will ultimately enable us to be really informed voters on Election Day. So candidates, are you ready? Let's get this done. We're gonna do a quick test. So Lori, you ready? I would like to have the candidates introduce themselves, tell us your name, a little bit about you, what's important to you, how long have you been in the community, and why you have chosen to run for the position of school board. And so Larry, you will always be on my left, so you get to go first. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larry Troy. I've been in the area of the district since 1988. My wife Becky and I came down here in 88 from Hackman, and we just loved it. We've raised two children through the system, and they're really just wonderful. I own a lot of business here. Brought the business to town about 22 years ago. I own John Martin Air Machine out of Lorwick. I've been involved with the school system ever since the kids first started kindergarten in the safety town. With that being said, from there, kids moved up through sports, played all the youth sports that they could play. At that point, there was a committee called the Stadium Committee. The Stadium Committee was trying to improve some things at the stadium, and I was asked to sit on that and help us. So we got some new bleachers down, some stadium lighting, all with private donations. From that, I've been involved in the ACC, and I've been with the ACC for over eight years, and we turned around and just kept building things, and that's why we have the turf and the scoreboard and things such as that. Also, I was president of the YMCA that we have in town, so I worked very hard at that, and in my opinion, that's the best thing to come to town, says the canal. Along with that, I'm along with Rotary, and that's basically about it.
My name is Jonathan Daniel. I've lived in Calhoun for about 15 years now. My wife and I have three kids coming up through the school district. My oldest is in eighth grade. We moved here, basically, I moved here from Manchester. My wife actually had a missions trip down to Orleans. I led groups down there for a little over a year, worked with a lot of different people down there, and learned a lot of different things. Also, we had a committee with the school board back about four or five years ago when the resource officer was actually gonna lose his job. There was a chance he was gonna lose his job, and we went and stood alongside with the school board. Sorry. Stood alongside with the school board and got with the city and went over finances and funds and worked out kind of a good deal, where we ended up with another resource officer and some more money for the mental health assistance inside the school. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not familiar with this or anything to do with it. And then I also run a heavy side of the company, my father's company, actually. I've been running that for about, probably about six or seven years, and I've worked with a lot of different people, engineers and stuff like that, so I have a good work relationship with people. I'm pretty good working alongside other people. That's pretty much about it.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Wyatt, for those of you who don't know me. Aside from a few years away at college and starting a family, I've been in this community my entire life. My parents were both raised here. They both graduated from Northwest. My son, in a couple of months, is gonna join the club and become a Northwest alumni as well. He'll be graduating in the spring. I've spent the last 16 years as a district volunteer. In that time, I've heard from many parents about the great things in the district, which I know about personally, but also about some frustrations and disappointments. Having that volunteer role, people tend to talk to me about things because I'm involved, but I'm not staff. I feel academically, we are amongst one of the best schools in the state. Those test scores can all prove that out. But I do think that when it comes to conduct, policy, and accountability, our kids, your kids, they deserve a little bit better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, I'm Brian Bowman. I've been in the school district, this area, eight years now. So I married my wife Stephanie, who lived in the district. Our daughter Bree is the head major at, and our son is a first grader that we just moved over to SBJ. So I am, until yesterday, I was the Director of Military and Veterans Affairs for a number of members of Congress at the U.S. House of Representatives, and just switched over to do quality control for an AI project with IBM. But why I'm here, and I guess, I guess what matters most is actually being a difference, making a difference in your community. So I'm also the founder of the Sam Center, serving area of military veterans. We just kinda opened up a location. We're in the process of clearing up a location here in Canal Oak. And then also, I helped set up Loop 19, this pantry. I am on the Out of Flight Cleveland Board of Directors. Pegasus Farms Military Family Center, helped set that up, and I'm on that Board of Directors. I've been on Collette Love's Cafes Board and a Board Advisor for that, along with a number of other boards of EMP and a few more Board Advisors for other organizations. What really matters, though, is inclusion, and inclusion goes past. Just include me. It's include me, protect me, just be a part of me. Just be a part of the community and allow others to be a part of that as well. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Barkey. I've lived in this community for 36 years. I've raised six children, five of which are Northwest grads, one who stayed in Florida with her mom. But I was the RN by profession. I worked very hard to teach my patients. I served as an in-service director, which entails orientation of new staff, and ongoing education of current staff. I worked in nursing home administration as an assistant director of nurses. I've taught religious education for the last 15 years at St. Philip and James. I'm very involved at St. Philip and James. We do the Christmas Project. We have a community committee. We do coffee and donors. We just did a big pancake breakfast, which I was hoping everybody would show up at, and we did have a good attendance. I'm a mother to six, grandmother to 12, and great-grandmother to five, which qualifies me for any job. I believe education is an integral part of our whole lives, and I have the utmost respect for our teachers, and last but not least, I love Canal Oak and our Northwest School District. Having said this, I think with all the experiences, plus my four years on board, where I'm just getting started, learning the ins and outs, qualifies me as a viable candidate to continue as a school board member.
Great, thank you. Are you ready for the first question? So let's move the mic back down to Larry.
Oh, you're gonna do again.
I haven't even gotten to the really good stuff yet. Are you ready? So Julie, you stay.
We didn't touch him with really kind of the first question, correct?
Sorta, kinda. Let's go to part two of that question. So what particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
Well, I think I said that I'm a mom, and I'm a grandmother, a great-grandmother. I'm a people person. I like people. I enjoy talking to people. I enjoy problem solving. And I think those things are important when you're on the school board. I have a good sense of humor, which sometimes you need being on the school board. Like I said, I really do love our community. They've done so much for me, and I'm not using this as any kind of vote getter, but being a Gold Star Mom and having the support we got from our community, I had felt that I, that's why I originally wanted to serve, that I wanted to return the favor for everything that was done for me.
Thank you. So the experience really is, through the congressional office, I've also been in charge of the youth programs, whether that be the Congressional Art Competition, Congressional Award, Service Academy nominations. So every year with Service Academy nominations, I interview 30 to 40 candidates, the top, the brightest kids that wanna go to a military service academy. Also through that, I realized, like, Northwest has a four-point scale. Most of other schools have five and six-point scales, so that 4.0 Northwest student will finish 38th out of 43 candidates we interview when you're looking at them on a GPA scale. That's really really great when individuals wanna go to a service academy. I've also served on multiple boards over the last 10 years, and the brother, one thing that, I guess the best attribute, is I care, and I listen, and I communicate. I think that's what is really important to be a board member, is to communicate, listen, be out there in the community, help others, lift others up.
Well, I've had the pleasure over the last 16 years to serve as a volunteer band director in the district. During that time, I've had a very unique window into the school, its students, and parents. The kids feel free to tell me things that maybe they wouldn't tell a parent or a staff member, and I kind of credit that to the fact that they know I'm there because I want to be there, and it's not my job. So we have this unique trust over the last years, so they would tell me things that matter to them and things that are bothering them, and it really gives me a unique window into what's going on in the district over the last 16 years. From an education standpoint, I have a bachelor of arts from the University of Toledo in music. I was student teaching, that close. I was student teaching away from having my local education degree. But during my observation, I went up to a junior high in Bedford, Michigan, and I saw how this poor teacher was being absolutely abused by these students. And to be honest, it scared me. It spooked me, and I thought, can I do this for the next 35 years and deal with what this lady was dealing with? So I know intimately how difficult are the jobs are that our teachers do. I completely understand how stressful their jobs are, and I completely understand how much they love our kids. In my professional life, I've spent over a decade in sales and installation team management. I've been in charge of budgets of millions of dollars. So due to my experience, I have experience in commercial liability, fire protection, school security, all of which I believe are extremely important to be an educated board member.
Thank you.
So I kind of screwed it up and kinda answered that one when I first came through. And I guess I could kinda further go in. I think one of the bigger things that is good for my qualifications is when I was down south working with the missions groups, we had anywhere from 10 to 100 different people come down every single week for a year. So I got really good with leadership down there. I had to run crews of doing mud outs and tear downs of many homes that had been flooded out. From there, we did that for about six months. From there, we went on for about another six months doing rebuilds, new construction on homes with people that were from the ages of five to 70, 80 years old, most of whom had no experience whatsoever doing any type of instruction. So I learned a lot of people skills down there, being able to work with people that really had no clue what they were doing. So that's kinda, I guess, another follow-up to the questions I answered earlier.
Thank you. Larry, hold on to that mic. They're gonna wanna back to me.
Well, I guess over my career it's been real simple, and that's putting forms of team together and getting things done. From, as I mentioned before, I kinda stepped out of line, I guess, there, but getting involved with the ACC, getting all the wonderful things that we've done with the school system, with the stadium, and all the sports facility and the baseball fields, that was all done with independent financing. None of the school money was spent. And with that was forming the right team together and the right people to get the job done and follow through. Got done with that, got asked to sit on with the YMCA, and was on that board for over 15 years, and we kept talking and talking a lot of YMCA. We had programs, and we didn't get any done. And it was assembling a team together, getting the right people. The mayor's here tonight. He was a great help. A lot of other people in town to get the thing built, and what a great thing that's turned out to be. You couldn't, you couldn't ask for anything but for the overall community, and I just plan on continuing to do that. That's why I'm sitting here tonight. I was asked by some people in the community, you need to step up and do this, so I stepped up and done it, and I've been very happy and very passionate, so thank you.
Thank you. Residents were invited to a website to list their questions. My next question is from a resident. Are you for or against using social media as a platform to respond to issues that affect the school district?
Is that me again? I got the mic. All right, I'm actually for it, as long as it's someone from the school district. As a board member, no, not at all. Board members should not be cued and gamed through social media. Board meeting, the board member has an email address and a telephone number. If you wanna talk to a board member, you should be able to call them up or send them an email, ask them that question, and get it resolved, and then they can get back to you. But opening up the social media and Facebook, no, not at all.
So I'm a little bit torn on that as far as social media goes. I actually just made a Facebook for the first time whenever I decided to run for school board. So I am not a big social media guy. I think it causes a lot more problems than help. However, as far as for communications on school-wide issues, we have our phone call system, which calls all the parents. We have an email system set up, which emails all the parents. I think social media can be used as a great tool for communicating with people. However, I would feel more comfortable with, at the board meetings, people coming if they have issues and talking face-to-face. I think it's a lot easier to get your point across if it's actually right there in front of you and it's not just a hand-typed-out email from somebody. So I'm a little bit both on that.
So in today's society, I think social media is an inevitability. It just is. To turn it off completely is just not attainable in this society. I've used it as a major platform for this campaign, you know, not wanting to, you know, litter the streets with signs and go door-to-door bothering people. I've been using social media to get my name out there and get my message out. So for those type of things, it has great advantages for communication. However, I know that if not used correctly, it can also have, it can get out of control really, really quick. With that being said, I really like a couple of things that both gentlemen have said. I like the idea that it should be a school employee. I think board members should be free to have their own pages, but they should never speak for the school on any platform, whether it be on a telephone or on social media. I know also that the schools have to be very careful with their words because of privacy rules and details. With that being said, you don't have to give details or, you know, divulge anyone's privacy to put a message out to say that, hey, we know that this issue happened, we know that this event occurred, similar to how the calls come out, and that we're working on it. We're investigating, and we're doing the best that we can. What I would say is that silence can never be a strategy when it comes to communication with the district.
All right, one-word answer. Absolutely. 100%. You should use communication, any communication channel that is available to you, social media, newspaper, anything. If you wanna communicate, speak with the public, go to the public and speak to them. I mean, it's, hey, if people are on social media, why would you avoid social media? You have to be on social media if everyone else is on social media. I mean, it's just a matter of communicating. What you saw, and I know we're not going into the past, but what you saw this past year, why we got national attention, is because you let someone else control the narrative on social media. If the administration's not on social media responding, and only one person's responding on social media, they control the narrative. They control the narrative for thousands of people, tens of thousands of people, and that's why you end up in a newspaper in Cincinnati and South Carolina. But if you have that opportunity to have a tool to communicate, why wouldn't you? I mean, positive messages, communicate positive messages. Communicate everything through social media, communicate everything through every channel that you have. It's your opportunity to reward people, to thank people, to show appreciation, and guess what? Apologize. That's one thing we didn't see this year, was an apology that could have cleared up everything. I mean, honestly, three of us probably wouldn't be sitting here if there was an apology when something happened. So yes, 100% I'm for social media. I'm for every single platform that can be helpful and every single platform that can communicate to people.
Okay, I'm gonna disagree. I'm absolutely against using social media as a platform to respond to school issues because there's too much opportunity to get into arguments, to say things that aren't really accurate, that people argue with, they get angry. Facebook can be an ugly place. However, it's a great place to shine our fabulous programs, our student athletes, our band, the art, drama, debate, choir members, and all of our district accomplishments. I have no problem with that. But I don't think, when you're on there and you're arguing with one person here, and then somebody else says this, and somebody else says that, it doesn't give a good look to the school district. It's no place to hash out problems, as far as I'm concerned. As far as, like, political campaigns, I don't have any problem with that. I mean, get your voice out there, get your face out there, however you need to do. But we have administrators and principals and teachers who are willing to listen and resolve issues. If the issues are not resolved, then you always have the opportunity to go up the chain of command. Our superintendent shares his phone number and encourages people to call about any concerns. And I don't know about other school districts, but I'm doubting that they, the superintendent gives out his personal cell phone number. So we have opportunity to take it to where it would be effective, not to be hashed out on Facebook.
Great, thank you. This is another...
Are you agree with your answers to questions as they're delivered?
I'm sorry?
The other candidate we hear are heading to the same question.
Yeah, she typed them out, so we're gonna get those posted from Mrs. Gerhardt.
She was asking, are you reading them? She asked.
I can't if that's what you would like. I don't read them.
I think it would be fair if you have them six.
There, I have them here. Cliff is gonna have to help me. I have to consult my daughter for social media, so it's a sad day of mine. Let's see, question number two. This is from Rita. There are many positives for the use of social media. We can let our community know the wonderful things that are happening in our schools post-upcoming events, alert students, parents if there is a snow day, etc. However, I am against its use for responding to issues that affect our district. School business is conducted at our monthly board meetings, not on social media. Our meetings are open to the public and videotaped, so everyone has an opportunity to view them. If community members have specific concerns, it is the responsibility of board members to direct these concerns to the appropriate administrators. School board members do not run the day-to-day operations of the district. Their responsibility is to make certain that policy is followed. Additionally, there is always the risk of cyberbullying and misinformation being spread on social media. And that is from Mrs. Gerhardt. Let's go to the next question. This comes from a resident. How do you see your role as a potential school board member or incumbent in supporting the ESC programs in the district? The resident went on to say, what ideas would you present to integrate the special needs families and students in the programs? For example, could we have a formal policy for a sensory-friendly open house? Could we enhance the website to include more targeted communication for these groups of students? So Julie, you have the mic. I'll defer to you.
The Education Service Center website has 25 leading pages of core services that they can do and provide for our students. Our current board supports the program there. The ESC special needs units presently are including in building and grade-level events. At Northwest, there's a new communication system. It's called Parent Square. It's used to communicate with students and families of all of our students. The ESC units as well have classrooms in the school, and they receive messages sent out by the principals. As far as having, you know, the sensory open house, they do assist these patients, these students, and having the opportunity to have a open house and familiarize themselves with the facilities before for the events. Our counselors and principals have worked with families of our special needs students who request tours prior to the open house. And at Northwest, we now have a constant position to guide our students in early career paths. Thank you.
Thank you. Like she was joking with me that I write this question. I absolutely love this question. Where do individuals with disabilities belong? Everywhere. I mean, everywhere you have a student is where an individual with a different ability belongs, and we can find ways to be inclusive with them, rather than be in the band, on the football field, in the classroom, everywhere. You don't take a whole group of individuals that you identify with difficult abilities and put them together in one classroom and hope for the best. No, you involve them with everything that you do, and when you have that inclusion, you have that involvement, you don't have the instance of bullying, because guess what? They're friends, they're family. Okay, that's when students rise up, and students actually stand up, okay? It's involving individuals everywhere. But where it really starts is actually, it's not part of this question, but person-first language. Hey, we can actually utilize person-first language with the school board and with the teachers and with everyone. Once you start doing that, that actually starts building up individuals. The next thing you can do is you can actually have inclusive programming. I know our superintendent, Bill, was trying to get a hold of him for the longest time this spring and wasn't getting back with him, but he did connect here the last month or two. We have a phenomenal program at StartTV. Absolutely, Lisa Paramerson, phenomenal. She was invited. She wanted to come into the school. She wanted to do things. We got her to do the band, come in and talk about inclusion with the band, because that's what matters. We got her to do the band, come in and talk about inclusion with the band because that's what matters. I mean, every individual, every child has the right and has the ability, well, they have the right to succeed to their point, to their, the limits of their ability. And guess what, believe in them. Actually, number one, believe in them, if they have someone who believes in them, they can succeed and do more.
Thank you.
That's about as well said as I can ever come up with. Look, nobody knows better what a student with special needs needs better than their parents. It sounds like maybe something like this has already started, but I would love to see a position that their core responsibility was making sure that all students feel that they are safe and their parents feel that they're being heard, that they're listened to. I've seen some amazing caring students in my years around the school and staff as well, some just amazing people in this district when it comes to helping with special students. I'd also love to see a program built that pairs some of our kids with special needs with some of the student leaders in the school. You know, I'm sure there's way more creative people than I to come up with something to call this, but you know, care cushions or something where these kids are partnered with the popular kids, the cheerleaders, the football team. Because if you're ever around any of these kids like I have been that do have special needs, the thing you'll pick up right away is there are some of the most loving people that you will ever be around with the biggest hearts. And when we let them down, we are really letting down our community. You know, having peers looking out for them, having a guardian angel that's on their level so that they can have their ear to the ground and hear about these kind of things and snub them out before they happen could be a real way to make sure that these kids feel like they're respected, feel like they're included, and feel like they're loved. And I don't just mean one day a week in a special assembly, I mean every day and always in this district.
Thank you.
So as far as the ESC programs and how they're integrated in our school districts, I had to do a lot of outreach for this one because I have, my wife and I have three children. We have not been involved in any ESC programs. I scoured the websites, I tried to find what programs were in our schools. It was very difficult to find what we include in our schools for special needs kids. So I outreach to a couple of different people and some of the responses that I got back was, one was the open house. In fact, they were extremely happy about the open house that we have. They basically have an hour before the regular open house for kids that have sensory problems and they said it's fantastic and they love it. They also both complimented how great our school is for their special needs kids. They said our school district is extremely great for them, they haven't had any problems with it. In fact, that was one of their highest praises that they gave our schools was their special needs classes. As far as that goes, we did, I will actually be getting a little more involved with that. I just found out that our middle son has dyslexia. So I will actually be getting involved in ESC classes more this year. So I will be able to kind of do a crash course and learn a little bit more about what our school does and how they integrate that into the system. But that's kind of what I'm gonna do.
Thank you.
We need to support every student that needs assistance. I think Northwest does a very good job. I've also talked to some parents that have gave us high praises, but I think we can always do better. I think with that is getting some of our administration involved with some other school districts, seeing what they're doing, what's working for them, and this is new to all of us. I mean, I'm sorry, when I grew up, it was a reworkshop of things such as that. That place didn't even exist anymore, so. And I think we need, it's been thrown into this school system. I think it's a very good thing for the students to come into the system and watch them grow and keep working with other students. But I think there's a lot of stuff here that still needs to be learned. Before we share that information with other districts, I think we can really make this shine.
Thank you. I'll read Mrs. Gerhardt's response to the same question. Our staff and faculty are experts in this area and as a board member, I support the programs and advocate for inclusion. I am always open to reviewing and recommending fresh and new ideas. Currently, our ESC special needs units are included in all building and grade level events. The ESC unit staff are encouraged to attend meetings and professional development training. Administrators work with parents who request that their children tour the building prior to open house, making necessary accommodations so their children feel comfortable in their new surroundings. Parent Square, along with emails, phone calls, and text messages, are used to communicate with parents. All right, are we ready? I'm gonna combine questions four and nine. I know you guys all wanted me to do that.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, that's reassuring. Are you sure?
Can I add a comment here? We have, I wonder, we have the Idea House, which is a school that deals with special needs. Is that anywhere involved with our school system? Are we using the expertise from the Idea House here in the community?
You know, I'm not sure we can send that in to.
Well, Idea House is a community for autism and they are a state-funded special needs school. So they are resurged somewhat in what they can do. But they are trying to grow and become more involved in what we're doing. And I know Jeff was kind of talking with them, what's your name that was talking?
I've spoke there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I spoke there, I've been there a couple times.
Yeah, because they were talking about getting the church. So they were involved in trying to figure out how to work with their curriculum and their, what they need in school. But they decided to stay where they are, but they're trying to integrate it.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to the next question. What do you see as the top three issues facing public education? You can either across the country and then drill into our district. So let me read you Rita since I have the, I have the mic. And now, my husband concerns. What do you see as the top three issues? She responded, school safety, equitable funding, excess testing, and data collection. She believes those are facing both nationally and locally.
Student safety is number one in my opinion. The system has continued to work on that. We found out at the last board meeting that they've spent over $250,000, we had last year in grant money, that every bus that goes down the road in Northwest has seven cameras on it now and that all the cameras in high school, middle school, all the schools have been replaced with the latest and greatest technology. But in my opinion, school safety is number one. The big one that I feel we've got to work on in the country and also in our district is mental health. We still have kids out there that's got some problems and they need assistance and we need to be able to find that and fix that problem most definitely. The other area is community involved. We need to keep the community involved, hear the questions from the community and make sure we've got the awesome community and that the system is continuing to move forward with that.
Thank you.
I'm gonna assume that the majority of you probably have very similar experiences. The number one for me would be bullying issue. There's been a lot of that, seems like it's been going on more and more. I know that there's been some in the other school districts going on. I believe that's been a root cause of a lot of issues over the years, even to the point where it caused problems with school safety. And then my next one would be the mental health. That's obviously another, the market goes along with the bullying. Probably a lot of it stems from the bullying. There's obviously other issues that goes on. And then school safety for students. I mean, that's why we formed that committee years ago and with the school, with the city, was to work on school safety, to protect the kids while they're in school.
Thank you.
I see a trend developing. Being my background in security as well as protection, I feel like student safety, not only when they're in the building, but also when they're away from the building, is a huge, is a huge problem that schools all the way across the country have. We can have the best-laid plans, but that plan can go out the window when one person decides to make a bad decision or one door gets propped open or whatever that, whatever that happens to be. So we need to make sure that we have those redundancies in place to protect our kids at school, but then also at home. And that goes into what the other folks were talking about and that, you know, thirty years ago, when I was here at Northwest, bullying stopped when you got off the bus. It doesn't do that now. It follows you home, it sends you text messages, it tags you in posts, it humiliates you when you're at your most vulnerable. So cyberbullying can be just as bad or worse than what happens inside the walls of the school. Along with that, maybe we have a little bit of an eye into this that some other families don't, but the changing landscape when it comes to post-graduation, with the labor landscape changing and folks going more towards vocational education, not everyone is going to college now. The track is not college for everyone. And I think we need to make sure that we're preparing our students just as much for the workforce as we are to go off to a university.
Okay. Well, I'll definitely say safety, I'll go with everyone else because safety is incredibly important. We make plans, plans are great until you make all the battle plans, first time you get punched in the face, everything changes and you have to adapt. What's that? Mike Tyson, military headache, when the shots start being fired, you readjust. And that's actually what we have to do is readjust. Part of that goes into number two. What really matters, resiliency. I mean, resiliency is a huge problem in the community and that resiliency and part of that mental health. A couple of years ago, I did applied suicide intervention skills training in Maslin. Sold out. It's free, actually, it was one hundred percent free. We didn't have enough room for all the students that applied, it capped out. Free program, tried to do and run it here in Canal Fulton. And in Maslin, the teachers were there, we had local people there as well. Canal Fulton, we did it, we advertised, actually, we spent a couple thousand dollars advertising and pushing it. We had to cancel it. I mean, we had four registrations. So you have to teach the skills, not only resiliency skills to the students, but you also have to have the awareness skills as adults, as parents, as what to look for, how to connect with individuals, know what is going on with individuals. Because the last thing you want is an individual to take their life. And unfortunately, that's happening more and more, it's becoming more and more prevalent. And part of it is, hey, guess what, if you don't fail, you don't know how to fail. So you have to have that. The third thing is actually individuals being left behind. I mean, quite honestly, with COVID, a lot of people got left behind. It's great, our daughter is high achieving, four-point AP, everything. Guess what, you put her in any school, she's gonna be successful. No matter where she goes, she's gonna be successful. But what about that individual who's struggling? What about that individual who has a zero in their thing? That individual, we have to have a way to lift them up because you have to identify them as well. I'm sorry, my time's up. Go ahead.
Well, dealing with everything everybody said, they're so eloquent. We certainly have concerns for our students. Safety is such a concern because of what's happening across our nation. We have the mental health issues where people are coming into schools and killing other students, killing teachers, you know, just such a horrific, horrific scenario. So we are doing those things, like Larry said, we have the cameras on the buses and they've redone the cameras in the, in the school. That's gonna provide, we have our resource officers, which are, you know, they relate to the kids. They let the kids know that they're not there to find out what they did wrong, they're there to support them and help them if they're having problems. Also, we have concern about the bullying and that goes right along with the school safety and the mental health. Like Jeff said, the social media bullying has gotta be horrible. I mean, I never had to face that point growing up, but our kids do. And our kids are the most important thing in our district. We need to support them in every way we can. Third issue, and this is probably across the nation, is the funding. Especially in this time of economic downturn, we have, you know, things are costing twice as much as they used to and it's, you know, no, people don't want, you know, they don't have the resources to support the levies, etc. So we just have so much, these three issues are very important and we are always engaged in trying to make public education being the best it can be.
Great, thank you. Here's the next question, and I'm gonna frame it with this debate is taking place across many districts in our nation. Board members are navigating the best path forward for their communities. What are your views and how would you recommend Northwest proceed regarding book bans, augmentation of classroom lessons being taught on uncomfortable aspects of American life and history?
Okay, I don't support banning books, but I do support keeping books with inappropriate graphic, violent, sexual material out of our schools. There's no reason to have them there. And there's been multiple examples across the country of people going to school board meetings and saying, reading things that are in their school's library and it's shocking. I have no problem with classroom lessons being taught on any aspect of American life and history as long as it's founded in truth and not revisionist history. I did sign the Moms for Liberty pledge and completed their questionnaire for the election. Because of that, both Josh and I were targeted by a group called Educate Ohio, claiming that we supported out-of-district special interest groups that attack public schools. Well, that was very interesting and ironic in that they are an out-of-district special interest group from Columbus. Ironically that is, they've gone on to endorse candidates who they don't even know their politics and if they knew, they wouldn't have endorsed them. One candidate from North Canton told them to remove her endorsement because she didn't believe in the way they dealt with things. I encourage you all to go to the Moms for Liberty website. They've been very applied. I mean, if you read it, it's about moms caring about their kids and what is being taught to them. They want to be involved and isn't that what we want? Don't we want parental involvement? Sure we do. And I want to read the pledge and it just says, I pledge Jonathan fundamental rights of parents, including but not limited to the right to directly education, medical care, and moral upbringing of their children. I pledge to advance policies that strengthen parental involvement and decision-making, increase transparency, defend against government overreach, and secure parental rights at all levels of government. What is wrong with that? That sounds like something I think we'd all back up.
All right, thank you. Man, through all that, I've got the question. You did a really good job. Well, something about Moms for Liberty, we had to go into that.
Book bans.
Okay. Regarding book bans, sexually inclusive material. I mean, honestly, why are you sharing with children? I mean, I think everyone should be able to agree that a first grader shouldn't know about blowjob. I mean, plain and simple, one of the simplest things is, why are you trying to put that in a book? Why are you teaching that to kids? I mean, there's a problem if you're teaching that to kids. I didn't sign the pledge, I really don't sign any pledges with anything with that on either side or. But hey, guess what? What Moms for Liberty did is they engaged people, they connected with people. They actually control a lot of the conversation and a lot of dishonest things are being said about them. So, but we have them here and like, I think there's three or four of them here. But they also show up to every board meeting and they're nice, they're kind, they talk. Not anything, you think that it's the boogeyman, is what people paint them as. And it's kind of funny because it's one hundred percent incorrect and all it is is holding people accountable. I hear the Moms for Liberty, when they come out there, they actually have to do FOIA requests to find out what the budget is. What, three FOIA requests to get the budget from our school? That's crazy and that's why you need the Moms for Liberty. I think Larry, you said email the school board members? Guess what, in six years, I haven't emailed the school board members, I hit Jim on this the other day, and over six years of emailing them, not one response. Okay, and likely the ones, the responses, if you email them, you get a response back from the superintendent. So yes, you need groups like that, you need all groups that will advocate for children, all groups that will advocate for parents. As far as signing a pledge, probably never gonna need to sign a pledge for anything there.
So I didn't ask for any endorsement from any groups other than my family and my friends and my neighbors who know me. I've asked them to endorse me and get my name out. I did fill out the questionnaire. I will always be transparent and open about my opinions and how I feel about. I will always be transparent and open about my opinions and how I feel about things. But the reason I didn't sign a pledge and ask for endorsement is because whenever there's an issue like this, I feel like the groups come out of the woodwork and they all want to paint you either on one side of the fence or the other. And whatever side that they decide to paint you on, well, then the other side is going to come and attack you. But when you talk to most people, most of these issues, they're not one side or another. They're right in the middle. And what that takes is it takes common sense. It takes a group of people to come together. They have some administrators and, you know, maybe a group of parents that could rotate on a yearly basis to actually sit down and talk about this. And what you find out is when people sit down and talk together, they have things in common. And most of the answers to these problems, they sit in the 80% in the middle, not on the 10% on the sides. Now, about the specific thing about book bans and that sort of thing. I do believe that we should be very careful about the information the kids have access to. With that being said, a second grader is at a different level than an eighth grader. An eighth grader is at a different level than a high schooler. And those should all be appropriate to that age. Again, decided by parents and administrators together. I have heard some things about, from students, about some personal ideologies being shared by teachers in classrooms. I'd really like, when I get on the board, for the administrators to look into that closely. Because the one thing I do want to make sure that we are doing in our classrooms is that we're teaching curriculum and not causes.
So, I was one of the ones to sign the pledge. I, first off, I want to start off with, I don't have any issues with the history of America, any issues with American life being taught at all in schools as long as it follows the curriculum that the school board members have signed off on. I've already run into that with my son where there's been some issues where some stuff has brought up that has nothing to do with the curriculum. And I have an issue with that. The parents and the members of the community voted the board in. The board voted in the curriculum that the school is supposed to teach. And I don't think people just put on in whatever they want to teach in there. I have a problem with that. As far as signing the Moms for Liberty pledge, I, it's not really, I don't consider it book banning. I believe that they vet the books that come into the school district no different than the school board members vet the books that come in. They're going to miss some. There's going to be some that are going to get through the cracks. I believe that parents, if they want to be involved, should be involved to double-check everybody. There are going to be things that are going through. So, I signed the pledge because I have an issue with books that depict sexual natures and things like that going in my kid's library. I don't want my kid accidentally stumbling on one of these books. I don't let him watch that stuff on TV. I don't want him to get on my internet or computer and look at anything like that. So, why would I be okay with them going to school and pulling them out of the school library? So, that's pretty much why I signed the pledge. I support the group that they fight for basically everyone's children. And that's what they do. They vet books and they make sure that the kids' libraries stay as they should be.
No, I did not sign any pledge. I don't believe in that. I'm here to represent the community. And the community can come to me, ask questions, and I will voice their opinion to the board members and get things done that way. I don't need to sign any pledges. Regarding book banning, no, I don't believe in banning any books, but I do believe it should be appropriate for the student's age. But I think we're way past that, this role of books and things right now because we've got these telephones that the kids have and the internet that can pick up anything they want to get to. So, with that being said, the school has put in a couple of policies regarding that in the last year to really clamp down on that, which I think is a major, major improvement.
Thank you. Let me read Mrs. Garrett's. Should questions arise, I would recommend that Northwest do research on these contentious issues before making decisions. There are numerous resources that address these issues. One source, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, created a framework that is worth considering. Here are the main points of that framework. Research student and community voices. Read the books. Reinforce formal reviews and the law. Reemphasize relevancy. Reaffirm expectations for inclusivity. I personally believe that we should educate our children to learn to think critically. And there are many avenues for all of us to reach that goal. So, are we ready? Who has the mic?
You're supposed to read the next question, the next answer.
Transparency is becoming a very prevalent requirement. How can a board of education best communicate with its constituencies? I'll read it. Thank you for helping me. This is my first reading. I think it might be for this, but she responds, keep students as the focus. Employ a superintendent who is responsible for operating... Oh, I think I'm reading the wrong question. So, hold on. Let me restart. She states, listen, but avoid making promises. You're a part of a team of five. You have no power as an individual board member. Only the board together can make decisions for the district. Use media to highlight district announcements, activities, and accomplishments such as newsletters, videos of board meetings, all calls, texts, and emails. Make certain that the chain of command is followed when responding to community concerns. Know that the character of the school district is reflected in your conduct.
It's your turn. Would you mind reading the question?
Sure. Yeah, I can do it. Transparency is becoming extremely prevalent. How can a board of education best communicate with its constituencies?
Brian, you said that no one returned your call. I apologize for that. Okay, I was not on the board at that time, but I think that is huge. Okay, that is simply, I would put my cell phone number out there also. If people have a question, they can ask it and you will give them an answer. Regarding the finances, I was involved with the finance committee that was put together when the school system was ready to go to the farm. And we turned it around with the current income tax. And we're in great shape now because of it. My opinion would be, if you want to see the financial, you should be given the financial. There's no question about that. If you want to see the budgets, you can see the budgets. There should be none of the secret here. We are a community who are always wanted to make the best for our kids and the class and the community.
I'm not going to put my cell phone number out there because I've got some pretty wild calls over the past few weeks. Since my announcement by the local school board. So, as far as the question goes with transparency, it's really simple to me in my mind. Just be open with people when they ask questions. Being vague and not responding to questions has been an issue that I have seen at a lot of the board meetings and stuff that I went to. Emails go unanswered. Phone calls go unanswered. If you ask a citizen of the community, ask some elected official a legitimate question, I feel that it should be answered. If you can't answer it on the spot and you say you're going to get back to somebody, at least get back to them and do your research before you do.
Thank you.
So, as we did a little bit earlier, the delivery method of communication can be debated, but it should be frequent and open. Parents shouldn't have to dig six pages deep on a website to find out the school board meeting date was changed 24 hours and five minutes before the meeting because that met the legal requirement for notification. The school and administration, they post things about athletic and other achievements and all the cool things that are going on in the school. But they don't talk about meeting details and how we're spending money or strategic plans. Those seem to be kept behind closed doors and then voted on with no discussion, at least in public. I want people to know what we're doing as a school district. Because if we're making the right decisions, those things should be celebrated. And the community should be happy about those decisions we're making. But if we're making the wrong ones, then we need to own up to it as well and explain our view and why we're doing the things we're doing. Again, silence can never be an answer to a question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, transparency, you have to be transparent about everything, 100%. What we saw in the spring, what we've seen multiple times is when you are not transparent, when you're not open, when you're not honest. Frankly, one of the number things about being honest is being open, being transparent. How many people have gone to a school board meeting? Have you ever seen the policies put out that they're talking about or they're voting on? They're not... I have been at over 200 public meetings, okay? City council, township, mayor. You always put the policies out, like city council meeting. You get a large bucket, packet, where you see what individuals are debating on and what individual conversations are on. Not only do you not see the policies, when you go to the school board meeting, there is no discussion on those policies. You get the information that it's being discussed in emails. Well, if it's being discussed across back and forth emails, that's a violation of sunshine law. Okay? But if it's being vertical, then you only have siloed communication. Siloed communication is horrendous. If you have one board member speaking to the leadership, speaking back and forth, and you don't have those conversations back and forth, there's a problem. I mean, you want to have open, honest communication. Guess what? You will never have a school funding issue if you have open, honest communication with the public. If you engage the public, you give them all the information. Not only put it on the meetings, but it out ahead of time. Allow parents, allow individuals to read what the policies are that you're putting forward and allow them to have a conversation with it. Make them feel welcome when they show up at a board meeting. Hey, here's the information. Here's what we're discussing on it. Here's the key points. And we will talk about those key points instead of ignoring the conversation on policy and just vote on it.
Thank you.
I have to say, there's a lot of feelings, I think, on both. Not that there should be sides, but there are sides that keep this person's out to get this person. This person's starting to trick this person into doing this and saying this. We don't need that. We need to work together to find... And if there's issues, we're, as a board, willing to talk to people, willing to try to figure it out. Maybe we haven't been as responsive as we should have been. But it just seems like so much, you know, we need to work together and really make things obvious. I'm very open. If somebody asks a question about something, I will... You know, if I don't know, I try to investigate, find the answer, and get back to them. It's... Oh. Okay, I'm sorry. So, we need to be accessible to our families and teachers to discuss needs and problems. This can all be done through email or phone calls. I personally like a phone call or maybe somebody coming up to me at a meeting and saying, hey, you know, with this, as far as the policies, I mean, I have the policies. Every board meeting, I get them all. I read through them. I get them ahead of time because I'm not good on the computer. And, you know, I didn't realize that people didn't have them. But that's a lot of paper you're going to go through. I mean, you said you get big stacks. And I think they should be available to the people coming to meetings. But I think we really need to quit having, like, this person's trying to get this person, and this person... It bothers me. It really bothers me. And I think we need to work together as a community because we have one concern, and that is our students.
Great, thank you. In the essence of time, I'm going to move to question 10. You know, we're all dealing with inflation. We're all trying to make our home budgets go a little farther for a little longer. How do you see the school board balancing the need to provide quality education with the need to respond to taxpayer burden?
Okay, that's really a tough question. Inflation has hit everyone hard and the school systems. Everything is more expensive. The lunches are more expensive. The electricity is more expensive. You know, we always have increasing payroll costs. We need to understand the pressing needs that our taxpayers face. And we need to budget-wise, we want meeting the educational needs of our students. And that's, I mean, that's a tough thing to do. We need to consider things, get ideas, you know, talk to the community. How much, you know, are you able to afford? You know, we got, some people really struggle. You know, they struggle to make their ends meet from week to week. So, we have to consider that. We have to, you know, do our best to create the best school system we have. We have, you know, we've done well with the funds we had from the pipeline. We've gotten different things accomplished without using, like Larry said, all the things of sporting and the field and the... Without using taxpayer money. And that's what we need to continue to do to resource those things that will help us take the burden off the taxpayer but still provide good quality education for our students.
All right. I don't know what the answer is, but do we have a grants person in the school district? I mean, that would be number one. Having a grants person writing, finding those federal dollars, federal grants, local grants, local funds, arts and startups giving out tons of money for different arts programs, enhance the arts. You can find ways to just enhance your program, grow your schools through federal dollars, through local dollars, through community involvement. I think Larry, you said you were involved with raising money for the sign. Those are ways... The other way of doing it is actually just being open and transparent, letting everyone know what's going on with the school district and the budget and what's going on with funds. Because there's 12 million or 16 million in surplus. There's quite a bit in surplus, I think, from the one meeting I was at. So, we have money in surplus. So, it's being good stewards of those funds. I mean, that's also the role of a school board member is to actually analyze that, make sure you're being good stewards of the individuals and their funds. Because if I don't know what you're doing with my tax dollars, I'm hesitant to vote yes and give you more tax dollars. Why am I going to give you more money if I don't know what you did with the past money? Or I think that you're being irresponsible with it. Because if the conversation's not had before you put a beautiful concrete parking lot in, okay, and where those funds came from... And I'm talking about the bus parking lot, which is beautiful, by the way. If you don't have those conversations, where that goes, what happened with that while you're doing that, then all of a sudden, social media controls the narrative. You saw that, social media controlled the narrative. And that leads to a lot of upset feelings. Every year, we get, what, my wife would say, $300 or $600 in school fees. So, on top of taxes, you pay school fees, you pay different things. Well, if we have this excess budget, I mean, quite honestly, anyone low in consumption would have to pay those school fees. Or, I mean, we have to be good stewards of it. But we also have to recognize the hardships that individuals face and just be open with people.
Thank you.
So, my neighbors in Spring Valley, they'll know from trick-or-treat last night or anybody that's been to my house. My wife and I, we live in a smaller house. We drive 10-year-old cars. They're very well-maintained thanks to Mr. Cal down town there. But I learned from my parents that you need to be smart with money. Just because you can buy something doesn't mean you have to buy something. You'll likely never hear me turn down spending anything that contributes to the education of a student. I want them to have the absolute best chance for success, whatever that means. I want them to have every tool and every technology that is available to them that they're going to encounter in the workplace. I know that there's different buckets for funding. And I know that certain funds come from the state. I know that certain funds come from grants. And you can't intermingle those things. I completely understand that and how that works. Where the problem comes is that we pay our tax dollars, we pay our property taxes, we pay our income taxes, we pay the school fees. And then the kids are still out hocking cheese and summer sausage so that they can afford their uniforms when all these other funds are supposedly being raised. This is where communication is huge, as Brian mentioned. He is explaining what we're spending and why we're spending it. Schools are funded by our community. They're funded by your dollars. They're funded by my dollars. We need to be more transparent in how we spend the money and why we spend it.
I'm actually quite fond of the cookie dough. Whoever's cut it. I really do enjoy the chocolate chip.
So, as far as the spending goes, being stewards of our money is very important. I know that, I have spoke with several people across the district going door-to-door and talking. You talked about raising the burden of the taxpayer. There are, it's about 17 million, 16 to 17 million dollars sitting in funds in our school account, which is fantastic. Our treasurer has done a great job. Obviously, they budgeted very well. I understand we have rainy day funds, money, and that's great. However, as things are getting tighter for parents and people in our community, things like parking passes for the high school, $30 parking passes. Is that necessary? If we talk about limiting some of the funds and some of the money that... some of the funds and some of the money that the parents and the people in the town have to pay for certain things, you know, there's that. There's, there's sports, pay to play sports. There's a lot of money that goes into that that parents have to pay. I don't even know if the majority of people even realize how much money it costs for a student to go and play high school football, baseball, Indiana sports. So, that, that needs to be brought out. People, transparency, people need to understand where our money's going. It's hard to not be on the board and have access to all that stuff readily available for you and be able to say where our money's going, where it could've spent better. I guess that's one of the other things, I guess, going back to question one that I'd be able to bring to the table, is I actually vet jobs for our company. That's what I do. I call companies to get competitive bids, competitive quotes, half the $8 jobs and stuff like that. So, when it comes to school funds and spending money on projects such as parking lots or anything like that in the schools, I would actually put that also. But, but being good stewards of the money is how you would make it a lot easier for the taxpayers, make them feel more comfortable with what you're spending in the schools.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a tough question because, I'll be honest, we've got a levy that's gonna be being renewed with the current income laws. And that needs to be renewed to keep us a five-star rated school. I mean, we, we had it last year. We improved on those school test scores. We're gonna be number one to start counting again this year is what I'm here for. With that being said, when it comes to spending money, no one even watches how we spend the money. I guarantee you that I will watch it like it's coming out of my own pocket. That's how I've been with the pride, as I've been with everything I've ever done. It's like it's coming out of my own pocket. You can't just go and blow money just because you get a quote in and look at three different quotes and say, this is what we're gonna do. You need to look at each quote and figure out why we're being charged, what we're being charged, and then evaluate that and make the best decision going forward. We have a lot of community involvement. That's the best thing about Kinnonville. Some of the people that stepped up and taken care of a lot of the stuff that the school system couldn't afford, but we've got great facilities. We just need to keep working on that, but we have to watch every dollar that we spend and ask questions if we don't like something. We ask why and get the answer. There again, we can't hide our answer. We can't compete against some Hudson, some Jacksons, but we can do the very best for our students with the money that we are allocating.
Thank you. Let me read Mrs. Gerhertz's response. Most school funding comes from the state government, about 47%, and the local government, about 45%. Several years ago, our district asked stakeholders to consider an earned income tax instead of a property tax to fund our schools. Our voters agreed. It is a more equitable, equitable way to gain revenue. Northwest provides our students with the most quality education possible, given the funds available. So, I wanted to respond to that. I'm gonna ask the last question of the night, and it's one of my personal favorites. You know, I designed it, so it needs a lot of time. As we end this evening, let's take a look into the future. You have been elected, and your term is up. As you look back on your term, term as our school board member, what is your most significant contribution to our school system that you are most proud of? Read Rita's. I've got this, Larry. I've really got it. Rita says, there is no greater responsibility that can be bestowed on a person than to be entrusted with the education of a child. Guaranteeing that our children receive quality educational opportunities is the primary goal of a school board member. I hope that I look back and I say that I always kept kids first in every decision that I made and that I was a cheerleader for our district, letting our community know how fortunate they are to have such a phenomenal school district. So, you're look back, I, whatever the term is, say three? Two. Some are what?
Some are four.
Some are four. So, you look back, you've been on there. What'd you leave?
Hopefully, a system better than I found it when I came onboard, that the school system is still number one in Stark County, if not number one in the state, that we are financially sound, and that every student is safe, and that all the special needs kids are taken care of, and we just continue to thrive. So, I'm hoping that I can look back and know that the effort that I've put in actually helped kids excel in their lives. It would be nice to see kids from our school district go further and further, you know, become recognized and just get out into the wild there and be worth something. That's what I hope, is what I'm hoping to see, just like with my kids. I'm just hoping that we can see our kids excel from our district.
So, for me, it's, I wanna restore the good name of Northwest. What I mean by that is when I have alumni calling me from out of state and asking me, man, what is going on there? That hurts me because Northwest is who I am. It's my parents, it's my son, it's this community that I've lived in my entire life. I bleed red and grit. You've seen me, people that know me have to see me at volleyball games. I'm a very volleyball player in my family. You'll see me at basketball games. I'm always at football games. I'm showing up, you know, at, at things that I don't have any involvement in, but it's because I love this school. We make the headlines sometimes for the wrong reasons. We have an amazing staff, some amazing teachers. We win all of these accolades and awards for academics. Those don't make the repository. Those don't make the Cleveland Plain Dealer. We achieve powerfully in the things that are important, but the name of Northwest has been dragged through the mud in the last 10 years, not only by this year, but by other incidences that have made the paper. While we have a great academic program, we have an incident response problem, and worse yet, we have an appearance problem when it comes to the community. In two years, when I decide if I'm gonna run again or not, I wanna be able to talk about the community and how the district has healed, that we're working together for the best interests of the kids because the community trusts us again. I want the kids to feel heard and empowered to help others, to eliminate all forms of hate in the buildings. I know it's ambitious for only two years, but those that know me know that I don't typically let difficult get in my way when I put my mind to something.
All right. Where would I... I'd start with, I really like Julie, Josh, and Jeff here. They're absolutely phenomenal. Is Canada supposed to say that? Hey, where I would like to see is every school board meeting, you talk about inclusion. Every school board meeting, you talk about the individuals that are left behind. Yes, it's great to have a 97% graduation rate, but you just fail 3%. I mean, you've absolutely failed 3%. So, I, I wanna see that 100% graduation rate. I wanna see programs focused on those 3%, not just the test score. I don't wanna see our daughter, who's an AP student, get pulled out of AP Biology to take a regular state biology test because it improves the numbers. I mean, come on, not every school district's doing that. That's cheating the system, okay? Only for numbers, all right? What I wanna see is, like, if I was elected, that that top 3% is lifted up, that we have programs from top to bottom teaching resilience, that we have individuals that know, kids that know that they're cared about from the day they walk in till the day they leave, okay? That's what truly matters to me, is that 3%. That child who goes hungry comes in hungry because he doesn't have breakfast at home. Well, guess what? It doesn't cost that much to put some granola bars out. If you have 16 million dollars, put some granola bars out. Hey, I was that child who went to school hungry. I was that child who went home thinking about that. So, it, it's just, it's a matter of how do we lift up those that need lifted up the most? And I would hope that at the end of the term, that inclusion would be 100%, not just, hey, let's talk about it once or twice. Let's talk about it every single, it's a bullet point on every single agenda, is how do we promote inclusion? How do we get Star D D involved in our schools? How do we bring everyone together and make sure every single child knows that they matter and that they're going to be successful in this world?
I do have a perspective of looking back on my term for the past four years, and I would say that one thing I'm most proud of is putting people in a place where I've worked hard to make our school system better. And we have a ranking, a number, a five-star ranking in the state of Ohio with our report card, beat out Jackson. You know, that's, that's really cool in my mind. We've done a lot. We've gotten prestigious awards, including the Purple Star Award given to all four of our schools. And our Northwest Middle School received a Blue Ribbon Award, which is only one of 353 schools nationwide, and only 19 schools in the state of Ohio. Keeping that in mind, there's always room for improvement. And I would defer our curriculum coordinator and teachers making the decision to continue this excellence. I think Brian keeps talking about the surplus, but if you look at the projections for the years to come, it's not, that surplus is not going to stay. It's going to be eaten up, and that's why we need to, to plan well and to make sure that our budget is, is what it's supposed to be. I really have a lot of respect for you guys. I'm so glad to be here tonight to hear what you have to say, and I, I'd vote for all of you if I could. But, I think you've all made great sense. You probably will be an extra board members. I also wanted to mention this Josh's birthday.
Thank you, candidates that have come in. Thank you so much for just jumping into something that was a crazy idea and giant evil. Thank you for being such great active listeners. And I hope you leave here knowing a little bit more about this important position in our community. So, I thank you for your time. Have a great evening.